Bye. Thank you. By my watch, it is six o'clock on the nose. I will call to order the Planning Commission meeting from April twenty fifth, and I will begin by establishing a quorum. Carolyn, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Is it?
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Yes.
And Mr. Claiborne is still absent.
Correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we do have a an established quorum, and we'll move on to other matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Are there any? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there any? Are there any commissioners who would like to pull this item from the consent agenda for further review?
I would like to ask a question. I had sent a, and Carolyn, I know you're online. I had sent an edit, which I'm, I didn't get acknowledgement that you got it, and I just, from last Thursday, and I just wanted to check if that edit had been made in the minutes.
Yes, ma'am, it has.
Okay.
Great. If no one wants to call it up, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great, thank you.
And just to clarify, that would be with the, to approve the minutes as amended.
Yes, the way that, yes, with the, with the, correct, the addition that Commissioner Firehawk sent me last week, yes.
Great, thank you. Carolyn, could you roll, please?
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will now move on to the action items, beginning with SDP twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, Victoria Heights AIA review. Could we have the staff report?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Andy Rattlebach, and I'm a senior planner with the Albemarle County Planning Division. Tonight, we have several uncommon items that have not come before the Planning Commission in quite a long time. And that these are AIA or Airport Impact Area Determinations. So in my presentation here, I'll give some background on the project, some background on what an AIA determination is, and then some staff's analysis of the AIA request and determination, and then into the motions, like in a usual public hearing. So as an aerial view of the site of this proposed development, which is called Victorian Heights, it is two parcels that are located on property between Woodburn Road and Berkmar Drive, and you can see the Walmart is just to the northeast. A relatively new subdivision called Berkmar Overlook is to the south, and then up in the top left corner of the graphic, you can see the South Fork Rivanna Reservoir. The zoning of these two parcels that are the subject of this request are both R fifteen residential, which is the brown color, which allows fifteen residential units per acre, and there is also two zoning overlay districts, the Airport Impact Area or the AIA, which is the subject of this request, and then managed steep slopes. Surrounding zoning districts include CO, which is the pink, light red color right to the north, HC, which is Highway Commercial, the dark red to the east, R six residential is the orange to the south and southwest, and then the white is rural areas. In the comprehensive plan, this is in, these properties are in the Places twenty-nine master plan in Neighborhood One. One, the northern parcel is designated for urban density residential, which is the orange color at six point zero one to thirty-four units per acre. In the one to the south, the purple is designated Office R and D Flex Light Industrial, which does allow residential as a secondary use. So some more site characteristics, as I mentioned, both parcels are currently zoned R fifteen, which allows fifteen residential units per acre. Both parcels to go together total just under five acres. The applicant is proposing a by right development of eighty-eight single-family attached and multifamily units. And with that by right development, they are proposing both a cluster development as well as using the bonus factor provisions in the ordinance. In the specific bonus factor, the applicant is proposing to use is the affordable housing standards to provide affordable housing units in this development in return for increased density. And the AIA overlay district, which I mentioned earlier, when cluster development and/or bonus factors are used, the AIA overlay district requires the Planning Commission, a Planning Commission determination. I'll explain more on that in a little bit. First, I wanted to just show where the AIA overlay district is. That's something we often have in staff reports, but it's not really talked about very much in staff reports. And as you can see in this graphic, the AIA overlay district really encompasses a significant chunk of the county, and especially a significant chunk of the development areas of the county, ranging from south of sixty-four, pretty much encompassing all of the twenty-nine North Corridor up past the airport to include North Point, Injic, those areas up there, includes Hollymead, Brook Hill, Walmart, the Rio twenty-nine area. So encompasses a large part of the development, the developed areas of the county. And so looking at this requirement in the zoning ordinance that requires this Planning Commission determination, there is one subsection in the Airport Impact Area section of the zoning ordinance related to cluster development and bonus factors. And it states that no cluster development or bonus level provisions or regulations will be permitted unless the commission shall determine that such development will reduce or be equivalent to hazard and/or noise impacts anticipated under standard level conventional development of the underlying zoning district. And this is really the only, since the only section that relates to this, there are no further factors to consider anything like that in the, in the zoning ordinance. So what the applicant is proposing, the applicant wants to use both cluster development provision and the affordable housing bonus factor to allow for an increase of density on this property. The affordable housing bonus factor states that if at least one half of the additional housing units allowed by this density bonus are developed as affordable housing units, then a density increase of up to thirty percent will be granted. And the applicant is proposing to provide, I think it's eight additional, or eight affordable housing units for an overall density increase of, it would be about twenty percent. And then the applicant is also proposing to use a cluster development, which concentrates lots in specific areas and allows the remaining land to be used in common open space. And then the cluster development, at least twenty-five percent of the area of the development must be in that open space. So this is just the proposed plan for the, that the applicant is proposing for this development. This is one of the sheets out of the site plan that is under review by staff. You can see the townhouses are at the top of the page, and then the multifamily units are on the bottom of the development, which is the eastern portion of this property along Berkmar Drive. And then there are areas of open space scattered throughout the property, especially along Berkmar Drive, and then one central, kind of a path going through the central part of the development, connecting Berkmar Drive with Woodburn Road. So in staff's analysis of this request, we looked at both the land use designation in the Places twenty-nine master plan, as well as the existing zoning of both the property, the subject property and the surrounding area. And as I mentioned, in the Places twenty-nine master plan, these properties are designated for urban density residential and flex office R and D light industrial, which does allow residential as well. And so the proposed density of this project, using the affordable housing bonus provision, would come out to about eighteen units per acre. And that would be in the middle of the range for what the master plan designates for the urban density residential, which is between six point zero one and thirty-four units per acre. And then looking at the zoning, there is, as I showed in a slide at the beginning of this presentation, a wide mix of zoning districts in the surrounding area from the R fifteen of these properties to CO, HC, and R six. And I wanted to mention that the RA, the rural areas zone parcels that are nearby, those are not in the development area because they are surrounding the reservoir. They were determined to not be appropriate for being in the development area. And so with these different zoning districts around the commercial development, the residential development, the proposed level of development from this Victorian Heights project is consistent with the surrounding areas. And as I mentioned, with the cluster development, at least twenty-five percent of the property would remain open space. And in staff's review of the site plan, that requirement is being met. And then looking at the structure height for the zoning district, since we are talking about the airport impact area, structure height would not be increased above what is permitted by right in the R fifteen zoning district, a height of sixty-five feet is permitted. And the tallest building being proposed with this development is about fifty-four feet. So taking all of these items into consideration, staff does recommend that the commission approve the applicant's request for the determination that this development that is located in the AIA overlay district will reduce or be equivalent to hazard and/or noise impacts anticipated under the standard level conventional development of the underlying zoning district. So I'm available for questions before we get to the motions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other questions for Andy?
Yes, sir. Let's just stay in with us. So yes, I do have two questions. Okay. So my first question is, well, I have three questions. So my first question is, did Berkmar Overlook have to go through a similar thing? Do you have any recollection?
Um, I'm not aware.
And then my other question is, does the map, I assume the map is the flight path that you showed us, the AIA flight?
Yes, I think that's generally how the overlay district was.
Does that change at all? Who, who gives you that overlay? Does the airport give you that overlay?
Um. Yes, the airport.
Airport does. Okay, that's really interesting. I mean, I fly in out there a lot. That's not how I approach the airports.
But I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a couple of different areas.
Yeah, it is.
Of that key.
Thinking about our colleagues, if they do anything in North, at North Point, there's, it's gonna have more density than we're talking about right there, but that's fine, okay. Then my other question is, and since it's only for us, on the site plan that you showed us, I assume the, the bit in the front is all, is sort of managed steep slopes?
Yes.
So unless there's gonna be, I'm learning, I'm learning from my colleague here. This is gonna be some significant sort of reterracing there. That's a lot of, I don't know how that's gonna be green space, and so I hope somebody's looking at that to see if it's really usable. Right now, it doesn't look that. And then the other piece that I'm gonna ask about is, on the left-hand side there, you have a sidewalk. How will a person with limited disability, with disabilities be able to do that? It's the stairs in it, so how would someone? Ability issues, since I don't, I'm walking, you know, coming up this, coming up the driveway, when you've got a sidewalk, so.
Okay.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions? Okay, so I need some guidance. Are we, we are not opening this up for a public hearing or public comment, correct?
That's correct. This is not, this is not require a public hearing. I mean, certainly the commission is free to take public comment if it wishes, but it does not, is not required to take public comment.
Understood. Okay, great.
Can I ask a question? I think the only thing that we're really ruling on is whether this level of development and impact would, in this proposal, would comport with what could otherwise be built here.
Correct. So and, and the suggested motion is on the screen. That's the determination that's before the planning commission tonight.
Right, we're not looking at their layout and all of those other things.
Or, or sidewalks or stairs on sidewalks. Again, the issue is limited really to, to what's, what's on the screen before you.
I only, I only brought those up to get them onto the record. That's.
So my other question, I guess, is related to the, the applicant and whether the applicant is interested in giving any kind of a presentation. I know we're a little bit out of word on a public comment, but no? Okay, good to go. Okay, so I think it's a motion. Do we have a motion to?
I move that the Planning Commission find that the proposed cluster development bonus level provisions or regulations of Victorian Heights SP, SDP twenty twenty-two forty-seven will reduce or be equivalent to hazard and/or noise impacts anticipated under standard level conventional development of the underlying zoning district.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Carolyn, could you call the roll, please? No discussion? Sorry. No discussion? Carolyn, could you call the roll?
Yes, I can. Mr. Missile.
Yeah, I.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
And Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So now, before we move on to item B, action item B, I would propose that we reorder items B and C so that we can be in keeping with the AIA reviews back to back and then conclude with the planting strip waiver request. And in order to do that, I would seek a motion to allow that.
I'm moved.
Second. Could we call the roll, please, Carolyn?
Yes. Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item C, S, which is sub twenty twenty-two dash one seventy-eight, Montgomery Ridge Phase Four Preliminary AIA Review. Staff.
Good evening. So this is the second AIA determination that we have tonight, the Montgomery Ridge Phase Four Project. It's a very similar presentation, so I may go through this one more quickly and skip some of the slides that were the same as in the last presentation. As an aerial view of where this project is, I've identified the site. There in the middle of the screen, you have the Montgomery Ridge subdivision, the existing Montgomery Ridge subdivision to the west, Forest Lakes is to the north, and then Polo Grounds Road, you can see in the bottom left-hand portion of this graphic. The zoning for these parcels, there's technically two, one larger parcel that is where most of the development is going to be, and then one smaller parcel in Montgomery Ridge where a connecting road is going to be, and that's the, that'll be the subject of the next item tonight. And these parcels are zoned R one residential, which permits one unit per acre. And the overlay zoning districts on these par, properties are, again, the AIA, managed steep slopes and preserved steep slopes. And then some of the surrounding zoning districts, you have NMD, Neighborhood Model District, which is Brook Hill, and then Forest Lakes is PUD Planned Unit Development. Looking at the com, comprehensive plan, these parcels are also in the Places twenty-nine master plan. They're in the community of Hollymead portion of it. And they are designated for neighborhood density residential, which recommends three, three to six units per acre. And then there's an institutional designation on property to the west, and then some green space areas around Forest Lakes. Looking at the site characteristics, as I mentioned, they're zoned R one. The two parcels together total approximately fourteen point two seven acres. On the existing use, there's one single-family detached house on the larger property, along with some accessory structures. And so the applicant is proposing to develop this property by right with fourteen single-family detached houses. And again, the applicant is requesting to use the cluster development and bonus factor provisions of the ordinance. And the specific bonus factor being used in this development is the environmental standards bonus factor for maintaining wooded areas. Again, showing where the AIA overlay district is in the county. The section of the ordinance that explains why we are here this evening. And then, so looking at the proposal for this specific development, as I mentioned, the applicant is looking to use the environmental standards bonus factor, which if existing wooded areas equal to at least ten percent, but less than twenty percent of the site are maintained, then a density increase of five percent will be granted. So that is what the applicant is proposing to use. The density really doesn't increase that much because it would still stay at about fourteen units per acre. Or, I'm sorry, one unit per acre, fourteen units on fourteen acres. And then using the cluster development, which again concentrates lots in specific areas. This is the proposed plan for this development. I've really only shown the area that's to be developed. This is really kind of the northern half of the parcel, and then the southern half of the parcel is the portion that is proposed to be maintained as largely open space and where the wooded area, the five percent, at least five percent, or the at least ten percent wooded area for the five percent density increase. Looking at the analysis, the land use designation, the proposed density under by right zoning is one, one unit per acre, and that is less than what the master plan designates for the property at three to six units per acre. And then zoning and surrounding area, it's a very similar development pattern to the surrounding areas, Montgomery Ridge and Forest Lakes. The zoning district matches the existing Montgomery Ridge subdivision to the west. As a cluster development, at least twenty-five percent will remain open space, and as I mentioned, that's really the southern portion of the property. And then the height of the structures will not be increased above what is permitted by right in the R one zoning district. So once again, with this AIA determination request, staff recommends that the commission does approve the applicant's request for the same reason. And I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you for the staff report. Any questions? Okay. Well.
Okay.
Sorry, Siri is listening to me.
Your watch agrees.
Okay. So I think we just moved to take action, correct?
That's correct. And Mr. Rattleback has a suggested motion that's on the screen right now.
You have a motion? Sure. I move the Plan Commission find that the proposed cluster development and bonus level provisions or regulations of the Montgomery Ridge Phase Four sub twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one seven eight will reduce or be equivalent to hazard and/or noise impacts anticipated on the standard level conventional development of the underlying zoning district. Ready? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Carolyn, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk. Oh, yes, sorry. Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to the last action items.
Mr. Chair, if I might, at, at this juncture, now that we've considered these two requests, I suggested to staff that we seek the input of the commission as to whether or not the commission would like these items to come back as regular action items or consent agenda items in the future. This is the first airport impact action that we've had in quite some time. And I suggested to staff when we were discussing this, that, that the first ones in a while will be brought back as regular action items, but then to seek the input of the commission as to when these are scheduled on future agendas, whether they should be consent agenda items that can be pulled or whether they should continue to be regular action items. So we'd, staff would appreciate some input on that issue.
Thoughts on that?
I'm fine with these being part of the consent agenda.
I do, yes.
Agree. We have, we can review them if there's any question, we can just pull them from the.
Right.
Hey, I think it's unanimous.
Okay, then, so then when these come forward in the future, we'll put them on the consent agenda, subject to them being polled on an individual basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the last action item, SUV twenty twenty-two dash one ninety, Montgomery Ridge Phase Four Sidewalk slash Planting Strip Waiver.
So for this final item tonight, the Montgomery Ridge waivers, they also have to do with the proposed subdivision plat of Montgomery Ridge Phase Four, just like the previous item we looked at, the AIA determination. And so I'll go through some of the same slides again. It's the same site, these two parcels that are just to the east of the existing Montgomery Ridge subdivision. And specifically this, these requests for the sidewalk and planting strip waivers especially are apply more to this parcel that I've highlighted. This is the proposed road parcel, which is where the interconnection between the existing Montgomery Ridge subdivision and the new lots are proposed to go. And this parcel was when the original Montgomery Ridge subdivision was planted. This parcel was reserved for future dedication to the county. It is, however, still owned by the HOA by Montgomery Ridge. And so the applicant is looking to acquire this parcel from the HOA to be able to develop the parcel that you see on the right side of the screen to the east. But when designing the road for, for the development and putting it on this parcel, this parcel is not wide enough to accommodate the road that is required by, by our current regulations with the width of the road, sidewalks and planting strips and that sort of thing. So that is one of the main reasons why the applicant has submitted this request to modify the street standards for planting strips and sidewalks for this development. So explaining more about this proposal, again, the parcels are stoned R one. Both parcels together are just over fourteen and a quarter acres. The existing use is one single-family detached house. The proposed by right development is fourteen single-family detached houses using the cluster subdivision and the bonus factors. As I mentioned, the parcel that small road parcel is owned by the Montgomery Ridge HOA, but it's not wide enough for current street design regulations. So the applicant has requested to modify the sidewalk requirements to permit a sidewalk on only one side of the street and modify the planting strip requirements to allow reductions in the planting strip widths. Zoning, as I mentioned, it's one R one residential, allowing one unit per acre with overlay zoning districts of AIA, and then both managed and preserved steep slopes. The comprehensive plan, again, designates these parcels as neighborhood density residential, allowing residential or recommending residential at three to six units per acre. This is a conceptual plan from the preliminary subdivision plat that the applicant has submitted. So this up here on the kind of top left of the graphic is the street in the existing Montgomery Ridge subdivision that would be built on that parcel, showing sidewalk on the left side, which is the south side of the parcel. There would be no sidewalk on the north side of the street. And then the planting strips would be reduced in width, at least a minimum of four feet on the north side, the right side, and a minimum of three feet on the left side, the south side of the street. And then the applicant is also proposed to acquire an easement from that neighboring property owner on the south side of the sidewalk to put in additional vegetation and landscaping. And then also the sidewalk waiver would also apply to Settlers Ridge Road. That's the name of this proposed street on the cul-de-sac that's on the right side, the right-hand cul-de-sac, where that open space is up against the existing Montgomery Ridge subdivision. Since no houses are proposed in that small area, the applicant is also requesting that no sidewalk be required on that side of the street as well. However, the sidewalk would be provided along the rest of the cul-de-sac in front of where all of the houses are proposed. This is just kind of a more zoomed in photo, especially at that area. You can see Settlers Ridge Road in the top left with the sidewalk just on the left-hand side of the street, and the right-hand side shows a four-foot grass strip. And even though it's called a planting strip, in a lot of ways, it would be more of a buffer because it would be adjacent to that neighbor's yard. So there would be no separation in the grass or vegetation between that planting strip and that neighbor's yard. And then you can see Settlers Ridge Road as it curves down at the bottom of the screen, that open space A. There is also no sidewalk being provided on that side of the street either, since there are no houses on that portion of the road, and it would just be open space. The planting strip, however, can be provided there. Again, it would really be more of a buffer than a planting strip separating the street from the sidewalk, but the planting strip can be put there. So looking at the positive aspects, it does allow for interconnectivity of developments within the development area, both the existing Montgomery Ridge subdivision and this new proposed subdivision. A sidewalk will be provided on the southern side of the street to facilitate continued pedestrian access. And with only fourteen houses being proposed in this new development, staff did not think that having sidewalks on both sides of the street was absolutely necessary to be able to facilitate that pedestrian access because it's unlikely that significant numbers of people would be using those sidewalks with only fourteen additional houses. And then planting strips would be provided, although narrower, along with that proposed landscaping easement that the applicant has shown to help maintain the urban character of the streets. Concerns, none were identified by staff. And so staff does recommend approval of the request to vary the planting strip and the sidewalk requirements for this proposed public street, which has been called Settlers Ridge Road, subject to that the, those requests do follow the plan that was provided, showing the location of the one sidewalk and the reduced planting strips. And Mr. Herrick has provided you with the proposed resolutions that include those conditions and all of that language in the resolutions. So I'm available for questions as well as the motion whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much again for our roll here. Three for three so far, two for, two for three.
Two for three.
Uh, so thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have one question. I know this is not what we're doing here, but I'm just gonna ask it.
I have one question. I know this is not what we're doing here, but I'm just going to ask it anyhow counsel. So will there be a time? If you look at the. First of all, who wouldn't want to live on Monaco Court? I mean, like. If you'll go back to that that sign there, please. So will there be a way to get across from where the mailboxes are laid out here to the to lot B? Will I excuse me without having to walk all the way around? Will that happen at the site at the site review?
Yes, um, that would be something that engineering division and VDOT would look at. During the road plan is to whether a crosswalk is required there.
Do you happen to know what the other court is called? Just by chance, and you may not. That's okay. I just thought I'd ask.
I don't know off the top of my head. The applicant is here, so he may know.
It's okay.
Great. Any question, any other questions for staff? Come on up. Thanks. Just identify yourself, Scott.
Yeah, I figure this here for three, I figure I'll talk at one time. This Scott Collins. I'm working on, I'm the civil engineer on the project, working on, working on this. Um, yeah, we designed it so that we would have. This is a tough site because it's dropping off pretty hard this way and this way. And what we did is we. It's weird because you wouldn't think a piece of property this size, you'd actually come up like thirty different layouts, but I think we did. So in order to get something that will actually works. But we created the intersection that way so that and kind of leveled the road off of that part. So we would have a good pedestrian access across that intersection right there. To get to the mailboxes and everything else. And what's cool about eliminating the sidewalk on the. On the west side of Sellers Ridge Road is I think we have enough room, we can, we're looking at basically daylight and some of the stormstorms, we have so much fall. And let it kind of run down along there, kind of like JPJ, sort of like the global rap channel. Provide a little water quality, but get some attention out of that too. So it actually really, really cool design. So I'm kind of excited about that.
What's the name of the other court?
What do I call that?
It's chopped off. That's why.
It's okay. It's fine. I mean, it's good. It's just, as you know, when you have such good names like Monaco Court.
Yeah.
Settlers Ridge Road, you know, that might be something cool too, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Scott. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff?
Now, just a comment, I, you know, I think I mentioned it before, but I'd love to see something where we can incentivize. Or strongly encourage people to use these planting strips for stormwater management. I think it's a great, great thing when people do that.
Thank you. And again, this is not a public, it's not open.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, do we have an action? Could we go Andy to the motion? Make a motion?
I move the planning commission adopt the proposed resolution to approve the Montgomery Ridge planting strip exception prepared by staff.
Second.
Great, thank you. Carolyn, could you already discussion? All right, Carolyn, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Mr. Carizana.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Thank you.
You. All right, that concludes the action items.
Mr. Chair, we have one more. There were separate motions for the planning strip exception. Now there needs to be a separate motion for the sidewalk exception. So if we could, here we go. So the second proposed motion here on this screen.
Great, thank you.
I moved to the planning commission adopt the proposed resolution to. To approve the Montgomery Ridge sidewalk exception prepared by staff.
Second.
Discussion. Carolyn, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Whistle.
Hi.
Mr. Carizana.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's, we will move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports commissioners?
Yes, I have committee report.
Right.
The CAC met and had a committee meeting about the Oak Bluff proposal. I don't feel like I need to go into great details about what was said there because you've all received many emails. Most of which reiterate the points that were made by various, by the many citizens that attended that that meeting. Yeah.
Do we know when that's coming to us? Because I did let citizens know that the planning commission had not yet received this for review.
Yes, staff.
We do not know when that will be coming. They are scheduled to receive the first round of comments from staff. This week, so it depends. After that, it's back in the hands of the developer to see. But my guess is there were a lot of comments. I think they're going to probably need to resubmit. In about, you know, but around a month, maybe something like that, another month of review. And then maybe so we're still at least probably two, three months out from.
I let some of the citizens know that, well, they asked me back, well. Why I thought that the the planning commission had this and you were reviewing it and I explained that was the staff. That was doing the review and that we didn't have it yet. So I think they were confused as to who they should write to right away. So. Anyway. I do keep all those comments. I have a special folder for them and when we get it, I'll get them back out.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray.
Yeah, I just one other thing and. Just for the sake of clarification, one, one of the comments that we had received suggested that. We impose a condition requiring an independent environmental impact study. I don't believe that's a power that we have, correct?
We can request specific studies that relate to the impacts. We have a list of them. In our, in our standards for the rezoning applications. And there are some that are related to environmental, but I think we have to relate that specifically to what we see as the impact. Does that sound correct?
That, that, that sounds correct. So the ordinance spells out what is required for an application to be considered complete. I don't think that an environmental study is one of them. We can certainly. Staff can certainly request that, but I think that under the ordinance, it can't, it's not required in order for the application to be considered complete.
Thank you. That was my understanding.
Just added environmental impact statement is usually a term of art used with federal facilities and. That is actually quite an involved process, which I don't think, I know we would not be requesting such a level of. Study. But it's good to bring that up in public. Let's see, the fifth and Avon CAC met. And we really, I don't really have anything to report from that because it was primarily a presentation of the county budget. That's what we did. I learned some interesting things and I'm sure you've all seen the presentations by the board supervisors, but. If anyone wants an extra one, we have one from the CAC. I'm happy to share. And then the historic preservation committee did meet. We're on a roll. We're two for two. The last two months and we had worked on the comprehensive plan language last time. So then. We were just going over what we decided, but staff has the challenging job of writing all that stuff. Into coherent goals and objectives, but we'll, we'll see what they do. But it was a very productive meeting. And we finally got to adopt our bylaws for the year as well as elect officers here in April. We had our. Annual meeting finally. So anyway.
Great.
Good meeting.
Thank you.
Riven. We had a CAC meeting also on the same subject. Interesting, you know, I don't, I can't speak to what happens in other CACs, but. The we want no taxes and increase in taxes and my assessment is too high on my house. That was. You know? That's out there. And so all these things that we speak about. I need higher taxes. And so there's, there's a sense and, you know, there's only, it's only obviously the people who come out and feel that way. Come, yeah, people who feel that way come out. And so we don't know, there could be a whole host of silent people out there who say, yes, I'm willing to pay. You know, if, if we'll get these kinds of services, I'm willing to pay for it. But it's interesting to hear people saying, no, my house, my, my assessment's too high. And I don't, and I wish you would reduce the, the property, the personal property tax rate.
Well, since you brought that up.
I did.
That, well, but Supervisor Andrews mentioned, he did the presentation. And he mentioned that the personal property tax was, had been reduced for the last couple of years because with the pandemic. And, and all the inflation, used cars were at a ridiculous rate. They've since dropped and. They didn't want to penalize all of us driving our old jalopies around the county who aren't selling them, but they've gone up to a weird price. So. They felt that in some cases, I don't think they have a mathematical equation, but that. The increase in people's property tax, even though the rates sustain their properties increasing values that pay more, but their personal property taxes still being maintained. At artificially lower level by the county. So anyway. I don't know, I haven't done the math. I haven't received my bill yet, so I don't know, but. There was a mindfulness on the part of the supervisors to try to equalize some of that thing.
It is a very good point that you bring up, though, in the sense that I know that in Crease, one of their biggest objections to the Oak Bluff. Development was the lack of current infrastructure in in Crease. And how that infrastructure is lagged behind, but certainly without tax revenue, we can't pay for infrastructure.
Great, thank you. No other reports. I'll just add one thing to my colleague's report for the fifth and Avon Street. Meaning it was not an agenda item, but there was a pretty passionate, heartfelt conversation towards the end of the meeting about the expansion of the growth area. On both sides. That was kind of interesting, yeah. All right, we will move on to the review of the Board of Supervisors meeting from April fifth, twelfth and nineteenth. Mr. McDermott.
Yes, the April fifth board meeting was a busy agenda for us. We did have a number of transportation items, including the quarter report from VDOT and staff. And also review of the secondary six-year plan from VDOT, which is the one that looks at. Our, the paving money that we received from the state and how that can be utilized. So that was the work session for that item. We will have to come back in net, next month for the public hearing on that one. And then also in the, in the public hearings in the evening of that fifth agenda. We had Wakefield Kennel, which you all may remember, out near Earlysville. And that was approved unanimously by the Board of Supervisors. The Gobblers Ridge Development Rights question that came before you as well was also approved unanimously by the board. And finally, the Woodridge Solar Developments were both approved unanimously. Or I'm sorry, one, one's for the substation, one was for the, the actual solar array, but both approved unanimously by the board. So it was a busy day for board meeting. There was actually nothing. On the, the nineteenth agenda, which is the only other one that has happened since then. They, the board didn't have a twelfth agenda. I'm not sure why that's on there. The nineteenth actually had no. Community development items on the agenda. There was a presentation on, from, from our. Housing manager on the housing incentive program during the day. But that was the only item related to really the work that we do here.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McDermott? All right, next item is the AC forty-four update. Are there any updates?
I, I don't, I don't have anything after our presentation. Yeah, that's.
This happened in the half hour break.
Yeah, no, no changes. I think we got a good update, but once again, like to keep that on the agenda so we don't lose track of it. So you got your update earlier.
Any new business?
I have a question for staff. This is just something that came up in the fifth and Avon meeting. Somebody asked me about this a couple of minutes ago. There were, there were some concerns. I don't want to name a particular development right now, but there were some concerns with developments that had lighted ballards. Or ballards, I don't recall them, you know, posts with lights on them that are bright and glowing, you know, they're sort of on all night. And the question is, is that a loophole in our lighting ordinance, you know? But we, we tell people about downward directed lighting and how many lumens it can be. Is there, is that possible that there's something where, you know, people are just having these glowing? Posts in the, in the night?
Yeah, usually it's in a public space. Is that what you're talking about?
Like a long walkways and things, but people were showing, I, I saw some photos from someone's house where they're inside their house and they're now looking out these glowing orbs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of that. I'd be happy to take a look at it and have our, our development review team see if that's something that. Should have an approval or not.
I'll share the correspondence with you and then I'd just like to understand if it, if it's allowed, not allowed. We need to address that in the future because I know that our lighting ordinance is going to be looked at as part of the zoning updates that we're working on.
Absolutely. Yes, please. If you just forward that to me, I will take a look at it and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't even know we had that.
I was just, it was like, that was cool. So at some point, could, I'm not trying to put you on the spot right now, but. Oh, gosh.
Hello, Mr. Lee. This during the meeting, this, during the presentation for Victoria Heights. Staff mentioned that there was an environmental bonus, which was the first time in my tenure. That I'd heard about that and it was exciting because we talked about that, we talked about that earlier. And so I'm wondering at some point if someone could give us just either point us to, to that in the, in the, in the, in the ordinance. So that we could understand more about it, but that was actually, it was. Unless you feel like you want to talk about it right now.
We can, I'll, I'll look into it and I'll get back to you, let you make sure that you have the information there. Oh, Mr. Herrick.
So Mr. Bivens, just briefly, in the zoning ordinance, it's in County Code Section eighteen dash two point four, lists out several different types of, of bonuses. That are available to applicants. They include environmental standards, affordable housing, development standards, including road improvements. Land not otherwise required by law to be dedicated to public use. These are all spelled out again in County Code Section eighteen dash two point four that lists all the different types of. Density bonuses that are available.
Thank you. I mean, I think that's one that we actually should hopefully.
Yeah, learn more.
Yeah, yeah, learn more about that. Thank you.
I was also kind of curious about, like it said. The range, how, how they came with that range, like, you know, more than this, but not more than that. That seemed odd.
All right, any other new business? About old business? Items for follow-up? All right.
It's gonna be really hard, really hard when the chair comes back, Mr. Chair, for a time. To top the meeting that you just ran and that.
Well, look at all about efficiencies, right? So with that, I'd also like to mention that we have, I could have your attention, please. I'd also like to mention that we have no regular agenda items for the May ninth planning commission meeting, so we are adjourning to May twenty-third.
Really?
And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.
May twenty-third?